Yeah, we'll call to order February 24th, special meeting of the Huron Board of Education. I'd ask Mr. Christopherson to please note the roll call. And now I'd ask everyone to please rise, face the flag as.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Our next item is the adoption of the agenda. The only changes to the original agenda are one more higher to the district. So with that change, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved?
Second. We're moving to second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the agenda's adopted. Moving into dates to remember, February 23rd through March 1st is Public Schools Week. February 28th at 5:00 PM is the deadline for filing nominating petitions for a school board election. March 5th is early release day. March 10th is the next Board of Education meeting at 5:30 here in the IPC. March 14th and 25th, there's no school for spring break those days. March 24th will be Board of Education meeting at 5:30 in the IPC. And the rest of the dates are listed on the agenda. We've had no requests of community input for items not on the agenda. We also have no conflict disclosure and consideration of waivers. So we'll move to the consent agenda. Superintendent recommends approval of the following. Consideration and approval of bills. Uh, we have three new hires to the district. They require Board approval to be covered by our workman's compensation plan. Uh, we have two resignations for Board approval. Alyssa Schwartz, sped teacher at Buchanan after six months. Charles Markhart, 10-month admin assistant McKinley, position moving to a 12-month position. We have one contract for Board approval. Jacob DeShack, ESL teacher at the middle school, uh, seventeen thousand four hundred and thirty dollars salary beginning March 3rd of 2025. We have a request to approve the ESL summer school from May 22nd through June 6th. Excluding Memorial Day holiday, classes will be held at Buchanan, Madison, and Washington for qualifying students in grades kindergarten through fifth grade. We have a request to approve the disposal of scraps and inedibles from the mobile meats lab into the school dumpster. And we have an amendment to the JLG contract to include welding ventilation, scoreboards, and high school kitchen. That's the consent agenda in its entirety. We can pass it with one motion, or if any Board member would like to pull any item out for further discussion, they may certainly do so.
Move to per- uh, move to approve consent as presented?
Second.
Sorry.
We're moving to second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion?
On G, I have a... So is that... It's an amendment. So, don't we just approve more money for this project so they upped it again?
That was their proposals that you approved on, um, January 27th. This is actually putting it in the contract. It's the same thing.
Okay.
Any other questions, discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will vote. Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is adopted. This is the meeting where we do the formal exchange of negotiation packets with the Huron Education Association. So, see, one of their representatives is here. I have our copy. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, now I will turn it to Dr. Steinhoff so he can celebrate the successes in our district.
Thank you Chairman Van Berkom. Good evening, everyone. Uh, congratulations to Bailey Thompson, a teacher at Madison 2-3, and Kyle Corbett on the birth of their son, Cashden Lee. Cashden was born February 11th. Thank you to the music faculty and observation of March as music is, uh, as music in our schools month. And we can hear in the background the Buchanan students, uh, giving, giving their best at the concert as we speak. Thank you to the athletic trainers and observation of March as Athletic Trainers Appreciation Month. Thank you to all who teach reading and observation of March 2nd as Read Across America Day. Thank you to the buildings and ground staff and observation of Maintenance and Ground Workers Appreciation Day on March 7th. Thank you to the First Congressional Church for donating mittens, gloves, and hats to the Washington 4-5 Center and the Buchanan K-1 Center. Thank you to Educators Rising and the Key Club for visiting Buchanan K-1 Center on Friendly Friday. And thank you to Monument and members of National Honor Society for putting on a great cherry prom. That concludes our celebrations in the district.
Thank you very much, Dr. Steinhoff. Now we'll move into Board reports. Our first Board report will be the Classified Employee of the Month presented by Mr. Middlestat. Sandy Swinson, custodian at the high school, been selected as a classified employee for March of 2025.
Yes, you do, all right. Well, on behalf of the staff and students at Huron High School, it gives me great pleasure to recognize Sandy Swinson as the Classified Employee of the Month for Huron High School. Some of the comments that I received in her nominations are: Sandy goes above and beyond to make sure Huron High School is clean, safe, and in excellent condition. She frequently arrives early and stays late to make the school presentable and available to all who use it. She's always ready to help students and staff when they call for her help, even when she has to stop what she's doing to help someone in need. Sandy is proactive in her care of the school, taking care of problems before they become issues for those who use the building. Her attention to detail and commitment to keeping our school in great condition makes a lasting impact on student, staff, and the entire community. Sandy exemplifies professionalism and a strong work ethic and truly deserves this recognition. And I just have a little story to share. Not too many weeks ago, there was a building rental at the high school, and it was on Saturday. And I get a call from Sandy in the morning before, it was before noon, and she's at the high school already. And she's, you know, there's something, there was an issue there, and she wanted to know what I thought about it. And I said, "What are you doing, Sandy?" And she's like, "I'm at the high school." I'm like, "For what?" She says, "For the building rental later." I'm like, "What time is the rental?" And it was much later in the day, it was in the evening. She was already there, making sure everything was taken care of before noon. People weren't even supposed to arrive until about 2:00 o'clock, but she was there because she was concerned that things wouldn't be just perfect for them. So, that's just a typical story for Sandy. She goes above and beyond like that all the time, and we really appreciate you, Sandy.
Thank you.
Can't say enough. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
I have to agree, I'm in that building, or I've been in that building more often over the last few years, and it always does look very nice in there. So, thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you very much. Congratulations. Okay, our next report will be the good news report from Mr. Allers from the Technology Department.
I am going to, uh, keep my remarks, uh, brief tonight. The things that we're working on this year in technology are kind of more, um, behind-the-scenes things. So I don't think, um, there's gonna be a lot of, uh, public interest in the stuff that I'm covering here tonight, but I want to at least cover them because I think they are important for our district overall and for our department in particular. Uh, so I do want to go over them. Um, so, yeah, just like I said, it'll be very brief tonight. So, uh, my technology goals that I worked on with, uh, Dr. Steinhoff and the administrators this year, um, have to do with a couple of different things. Number one, uh, we were looking for a more robust content filter. Uh, we came across a, uh, a new, uh, filter that we use to filter out the inappropriate content for our kids. Um, it's, it's a never-ending battle because there are things that we need to block, but there are some good things that we want to open up for kids, particularly when we talk about the area of YouTube, for example. There's a ton of stuff on there that's not necessary, it's not school-related, uh, but it is, but there are educational materials on there too, um, and other video sites and things like that that we typically block for bandwidth reasons. But we wanted to try to find a way to open up some of those resources for teachers so that they would be able to utilize them in the classroom. So, that was one thing. And then the second one was, uh, to improve our technology department documentation. Every couple of years, the State's Bureau of Information and Technology comes through and audits our technology, you know, performance and, and our department, and, and what we're doing right and what we need to work on. And that's, uh, documentation always one, is always one that kind of seems to come up. So, uh, we're trying to work on some systems for that as well. So, with the content filtering, uh, we have a new system now this year called Delidale. Uh, it's just an online service that all of our student devices route their traffic through. So, the, 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 the filter looks at what the, where the kids are going and decides whether or not they're supposed to be there. Um, and then it blocks the things that are inappropriate. So, like I said, the, the number one thing that this, uh, filter has that our previous one did not was that ability to open up particular YouTube videos, and the fact that students can actually request live in the classroom, um, if they see a site and the teacher says, "Yes, I want you to go there," but it's blocked because of our filter. They can actually request to the teacher that that site be opened up. The teacher can then approve that site for one day, five days, whatever they need, um, and not have to wait for a technology person to step in and make that happen. So if the teacher knows that something is appropriate and they want their students to look at it, they have the ability to unlock that, uh, unlock those sites, uh, on the fly for the kids, uh, saving valuable time. They don't have to worry about, um, waiting for a tech guy to show up to do that kind of thing. So, uh, techno- uh, Delidale also offer, offers a few other features. Um, they help with, uh, student wellness. Um, this, uh, filter will look at everything that a student types in their Google searches, and if there's something in there that is, um, problematic or, um, think something where you would be concerned about the, the child's mental health, it'll actually send an email to, um, either my staff or, uh, high school principal, middle school principal. Um, and we've had several of those this year where, um, we've, we've been able to like step in and actually help a child because of that. So I think it's important that, uh, this feature is in there. We were using that this year. Um, a lot of stuff that doesn't, you know, isn't really a big deal, but, uh, inappropriate language and things like that. But there are times when mental health is really a concern for us, it always is. Um, but there are times when it shows up in the technology, and we want to be able to do something about it. So that filter, um, allows us to do that. So, uh, that's the Delidale filter. You can just see, this is the dashboard. When it, when my guys log into the system, this is what we see. So, in a given week, uh, last week I believe it was, you can see the yellow there, twenty-two thousand blocks. So twenty-two thousand pages websites were blocked across the district, um, from kids trying to get to inappropriate things, or just things that we have blocked because of bandwidth reasons and restrictions and things like that. So, um, and then it also, it also uses AI to scan those YouTube videos. So a kid will go to YouTube and scan, and, uh, try to get to a video. If it's educational, the system is smart enough to go, "Yep, that's an educational video, you can watch that." If it's not, categorizes educational, it brings up a block. So it's doing that on the fly with AI, and, and, and so what you'll see is kids actually get to see a video for about two seconds, and then the, the system clamps down and goes, "Nope, that's inappropriate." You don't get to see that. So, uh, there's, again, a lot of good things happening there. Um, brings our, our content filtering a lot more up-to-date and, and, and more able to be robust for our, for our needs. Uh, the second goal was improving technology department documentation. Last year, we started up a new program, uh, using a program called Instant IQ. It's, uh, something that we use for, um, all of our technology information. Uh, we log infinite, uh, uh, help tickets. Uh, we keep track of all of our computers, all of our Chromebooks, all of our iPads, all of those things. And then we can actually go in there and assign those devices to people. So, if I want to know what device, uh, what devices are in, uh, one teacher's classroom, I look up that teacher, and boom, here's all the devices that are assigned to that teacher in that classroom. So, it's very easy for us to, easier, or I should say, it's never easy when you're talking about mobile devices, but it's never, uh, it's, it's much easier for us to track down a device, figure out who's supposed to have it, where is it right now, and all of these things with all of that. So, like, just for example here, this new dashboard that I look at every day, we have twenty-three hundred, over twenty-three hundred Chromebooks, fifteen hundred tablets, which is the iPads, uh, a hundred and twenty-eight desktops, four hundred and seventy laptops. That just kind of gives you an idea, and that's not all of our devices. We're still working on this. So you can just see, you know, all the number of devices that we are responsible for managing. Uh, and using a system like this will help us keep track of what it is, who's got it right now, what building it's in, even down to what room it's in. I mean, that, that helps us narrow things down. Uh, and like I said, when we're trying to track down where a device is, um, having a system like this in place, um, has really helped us do that. So that's one of our goals. Like I said, when the, when the auditors come through or they ask us about documentation, "Do you know what devices you have?" You can't keep devices secure if you don't know what you have. So this is the first step of that puzzle of getting all of your assets in there. And then once you have it, then you're able to actually do more on security and things like that because of that, so. Some upcoming technology initiatives. Uh, one thing I'm excited about, uh, for next year, I've been working with the high school and middle school especially, uh, to, uh, utilize a new system inside of, uh, Infinite Campus, which is our current information database for the kids. Uh, it's called the Campus Workflow Suite. Um, and that allows, we're still using Infinite Campus, but it allows us to open up extra tools that makes our work inside of Infinite Campus more efficient. Um, for example, automatic emails. When a new student is enrolled at the high school, for example, um, the, the administrative assistants in the front office have to email dozens of people to let them know that this new student is starting tomorrow. The counselors have to know, the principals have to know, the technology needs to know. And they have to do that every single time a kid starts, uh, during the school year. So, this has the potential to take some of that off of the administrative assistants and let them, um, as soon as we add that enrollment record, boom, the emails go out, and we know who needs to know that information, and it's automatically disseminated out that way. So, uh, the second part of this workflow suite is HHS and HMS Hall Pass system. Right now, the high school is using a Hall Pass system just so we know where kids are at in the building, as they're roaming around to the bathroom or to, to see other teachers and things like that. Um, the one we have right now is outside of campus, so it involves, you know, now you got two different places. You've got campus and you've got this other system. This brings it all into one, under one roof. So, the Infinite Campus already knows who the teachers are and who the rosters are and who's supposed to be in what class and where it is. So now the Hall Pass system ties directly into that, and it makes it very easy for teachers. They don't have one more place they have to go to go find that information and figure out where a kid is. It'll be right there in the Infinite Campus system that they're already logged into. So, we're excited about that. And then finally, for the, for the outreach to the community, um, there is potential there for parents who use, uh, Campus Portal to look at their kids' grades and attendance, to actually submit absence requests for their kids through campus. So, typically you have to pick up the phone, or you have to call the admin assistants in the building where your child is going, uh, and let them know, "Johnny's sick today, uh, my student's not going to be in." Well, you can imagine how the phones ring off the hook between 7:30 in the morning and probably 8:30 in the morning at all of the buildings, right? All these phone calls coming in. If a few people use this system and actually can submit those requests, it shows up on the dashboard in campus for our administrative assistants to be able to go through as they go through their day and say, "Yep, these people are all, all absent." And it automatically goes into campus, records their attendance, records their absence. Um, again, they don't have to go to a whole nother place to be able to enter that information that's already in there because campus and portal are linked together. So we're excited about...
I do have a question. In regards to our assets, how, where do you feel like we are? Are we 50%, 75%, 90% as far as where we've got, where our assets are located, everything that's in that list?
I would say we're well over half right now.
Okay.
I mean, a lot of the student devices, I think, we're pretty, we're pretty caught up on. It's a lot of the things that are, things that we don't necessarily want, that we're going to touch every day, like you might have the copiers and the access points and things like that that aren't necessarily in somebody's hands, but something that we need to keep track of and see where they all are. Security cameras, those are all things that you don't go around and think about unless technology and S-technology. Those are all things that we're responsible for.
Yep.
And that VIT is going to ask us about. So I would say we're probably well over halfway with just those devices. And we're just continuing to add, you know, as teachers turn in their old laptops and get new laptops, as we cycle those out, we put them on this new system. And that just takes a little while to do.
Sure.
We're not going to go rip things out of people's hands just to, just to do the work that we're doing. We're going to do it kind of in stages as we go along. But I would say we're well over halfway through the process.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, thank you, Roger. Okay, the next report will be my land report. And I've got quite a few things here I want to bring up. Tomorrow is crossover day in the legislature, which means that a bill has to pass its house of origin or dead. So it has to pass tomorrow and get over to the second house. And so the legislators are going to be very busy this week. There were several bills that I reported on last time that had to do with tax evaluations or mill levies. A lot, I'll get through them here, but a lot of them were, were killed in committee or on the respective floor. But I guess I'll just start with this list I've got here. The House Bill 1019, the original Ventheisen bill that was going to eliminate certain property tax levies, it was killed in committee. House Bill 1092, having to do with capital outlay certificates, elections. It would require an election to issue capital outlay certificates. You know, we just issued capital outlay certificates earlier this year to finance our, our construction. It would require a vote of 60%. And it was, it passed out of the House. And it also requires that the elections for bonds or capital outlay certificate elections would have to be either on primary day in June or in the November election. And the House version said in odd years, same thing, June or November. Well, Senate committee stripped out the odd year portion and which would, the way it reads now that the Senate's going to vote on it, would, you would only have two days in an even year to have a school bond or vote on capital outlay certificates. So even if this passes the Senate, it's still going to have to go back to the House because they changed the House version. So this, this one looks like a mess. And why they, they are doing this, I don't know. It just seems like there's legislators that have an intense dislike for public schools and local control. So I, I'm optimistic our senator knows enough about this that he'll be a definite no vote on it when it, I didn't see it on the Senate calendar today, but they'll be busy going through their own, their own Senate bills first before they get to House bills. So I'll keep watching on that. House Bill 1119 was a bill to limit the annual valuation increases on single-family dwellings and non-egg property. It was killed. House Bill 1130, this is a, one that would require municipal elections for cities and school districts to be held in either June or November in conjunction with primary or general elections. It passed the House and has gone to Senate State Affairs. So that one is still alive. House Bill 1138 was one to lower tax levies and it was killed. House Bill 1180, which would require a school board elections to have the candidates specify a party label. It failed on the House floor. So that is dead. House Bill 1182, having to do with recalling school board members, was killed in committee. House Bill 1185, this was the one that tried to put a muzzle on associated school boards. It died on the House floor, thankfully. Prime sponsor of this one, I, I don't, just seems to be one of the big ones that hates public schools. So at least that one's gone. House Bill 1229 was putting some exemptions on property taxes. It was killed in committee. House Bill 1235, it's act to limit the annual increases on property tax revenues payable and subject school districts to a limit on property taxes collected in a year. I believe this, yeah, this is the one that would reduce the amount of increase from currently at CPI or 3%. And this bill would make it CPI or 2.5%. And it is on the House floor. I don't know if it was on their docket today. I didn't have a chance to look at what was on today. So it's either today or tomorrow, it's got to be voted on. I was at the Cracker Barrel on Saturday and it was a full house in there. There were people standing because House Bill 1239 is the jail for librarians bill. And that got the attention of a lot of people. A lot of people there were supporting librarians. This is a bill that would pretty much put a librarian in jail if a minor gets a hold of a book that could be deemed obscene. So there was a lot of vocal opposition to that. Fortunately, both our representatives were no votes on this. It did pass the House and has gone over to the Senate side. And Senator Wheeler said he'd do what he could to try and kill that thing. House Bill 1259 is the bathroom bill that's out there. It passed the House and is in Senate State Affairs. Senate Bill 51, the Ten Commandments bill, it died on the House floor. It did pass the Senate, so we won't be posting the Ten Commandments anytime soon. General Appropriation Bill, Senate Bill 55, it's still out there. I haven't heard of any changes to the 1.25% still, same school districts are going to get. Senate Bill 71 was making some language changes to the compulsory age before you could withdraw from school. It did pass the Senate and is currently at the House, on the House floor. Senate Bill 121 was a tax valuation reduction bill in the Senate. It, I believe it died in, yeah, it was killed in committee. Senate Bill 190 was Senator Carley's voucher bill. It died on the Senate floor. So as far as I know, there's no vouchers still alive, but things can be hog-housed. So it's still there. Senate Bill 207 was a bill to freeze assessments. It was killed in committee. Senate Bill 208, this also has, this also has to do with opt-outs, capital outlay certificates, how they need to be voted on and published. Yeah, it has to do with also voting on capital outlay certificates if you're going to issue them. It kind of in conjunction with the other one I reported on earlier. And then Senate Bill 216 that's out there is the governor's property tax limitation bill. It's on the Senate floor right now. So I don't know if that was on their, their docket to vote, but that one's still alive out there. With that lengthy list of things, that's all I have unless there's any questions or comments from anyone. All right. Well, thanks for listening, everyone. Now I will turn to Dr. Steinhoff for his superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two, two reports tonight, and both of them address strategic initiative number five, which is learning environments and more specifically ensuring facilities are safe and clean. So the first part is that we had an inspector with the state fire marshal from the South Dakota Department of Public Safety begin his annual school fire inspection today. That will continue through Thursday, the 27th, this Thursday. The inspections include the fire alarm systems, heating and cooling systems, fire extinguishers, sprinkler systems, the kitchen ansol system, building populations, and a review of our fire drills conducted. And they go around every room as well and check for issues. And if there are issues, then they're noted and then we fix them. So that's an annual thing and we're in that process now. The second one is, you've heard from Mr. Kristofferson previously about our, our opportunity of the testing for lead in the water. So I just have some updates that I want to talk to you about that on as we progress. First of all, as, as Mr. Kristofferson has said before, we're testing the school's water to see if there's lead in it. And lead is a heavy metal that can cause health problems if ingested, you know, swallowed. Water doesn't naturally have lead in it, but lead can enter clean water by touching faucets, water fountains, pipes made with lead materials. While newer pipes do not contain lead, some older ones do. So by testing the water, we can see if lead is getting into the water and take steps to replace those faucets, water fountains, and pipes. Every school in the state will have to test their water at some point, but we volunteered to go first. And this means our school may get some funding to help remove any faucets, water fountains, or pipes made with lead materials that we may find. When we have the testing results, we'll share this information with our staff, students, their parents, and community members. We will also share a plan for the next steps at that time. And by doing this testing, we're helping to keep our students and school community safer and healthier. So the process, you know, the reason this is happening, so why is this happening is because every school in the state is having to do that and we volunteer to go first. And then along with that comes the, some potential funding to help fix those issues if we do find that there is lead that's getting into the water. The next question is, who's doing the testing? Dakota Environmental Professionals will work in teams to test the water, joined by our school district staff. The next question is, how does this testing work? They will test water from any faucet or fixture that people in the school might use for drinking, hand washing, dishwashing, or cooking. The first sample will be taken after the faucet hasn't been used for at least eight hours. That way, they can see if the water absorbs lead, if it sits in the pipes. The second sample will be collected after the water has been running for 30 seconds. The sample will show results for the pipe immediately behind the fixture. And a state-approved laboratory will test samples for lead and we will share the results with the school administration. The school will then communicate with parents, staff, students, and other people who need to know about the results and what happens next. So what happens if we do find lead, the next steps will depend on where the lead is found and how much is present. The level set by the EPA for taking action is 10 parts per billion. For comparison, 10 parts per billion is roughly the same level as one drop of lead in an Olympic-sized swimming pool of water. If the amount of lead is found greater than that, we'll take action steps to keep everyone safe. This might include removing faucets, water fountains, pipes made with lead materials. And if lead is found in the water source that isn't typically used for drinking or cooking, we might mark it as a hand washing, cleaning water only and not intended for drinking. So we may wonder, is there a reason to believe there is lead in our pipes? There is a possibility. Lead was commonly used in building construction into the 1980s. We ask, can people still drink water from the school building? Everyone's level of comfort is different. Young people, adults who are pregnant or nursing are especially at risk to the effects of lead. To avoid the lead, that water might absorb from sitting in a pipe. You can run water for 30 seconds or so before drinking. You might also choose to drink bottled or filtered water. And I can say in my own personal situation, I get water every day from the bottle filler down where the concession stand is. And I'll continue to do that, just in terms of my own, my own, I'm not overly concerned that I'm going to switch to, to bottled water. Another question is, do we need to avoid water from the school before or after testing? The testing will take place outside normal school hours, so there's no need to worry about disrupting the testing by using the school's water on a normal schedule. And if people have questions on who they need to contact, it's me. And my, they can contact me via email or my landline at 353-6990. So that concludes my, my two reports this evening. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Steinhoff? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Very informative. Okay, moving into old business. Our, one item of old business is Section L, Educational Agency Relations. This is going to serve as our first reading. Goes in conjunction with Strategic Plan Initiative Four, Growth and Development Planning. We've got our current Section L policy. Then we've got Policy LA, Educational Agency Relation Goals. This is a new policy. LAA, Student Teachers. It's a new policy replacing LEA. LEA, Student Teaching and Internships, going to retire and replace with LAA. And then we have LI, Relations with Education Accredited Agencies. It's a new policy. There's been no changes since the introduction. So unless there's any questions or comments, this will serve as first reading and be on the next agenda for a second reading and final approval. Okay, seeing no further discussion. We have no new business. We have one item for executive session in accordance with codified law 1-25-2 subsection four, Preparing for Contract Negotiations. So I would entertain a motion to go into executive session for this item.
So moved?
Moved and seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, we'll take a short recess and then go into executive session.
We'll go into my office.
Your office.